About to mention that, but yes, we will have two minutes each for a closing.
Okay. I thank you so much. My name is Teresa Malidi and three years ago when I ran for office, I remember attending the Mule Skinner's luncheon and forum at the Columbia Country Club. And I think about how much has changed since then, but it feels a little bit like coming back home for me today. So thank you for hosting. I think a lot of you know my background. I was born and raised here in Columbia, Missouri. I attended the Columbia Public Schools and I really felt that my education gave me an advantage when I went off to college and then also had a career in business. When I moved back to Columbia about 23 years ago, I became very involved in the community with a focus on education, specifically early childhood education. I also volunteered time to support Columbia Public Schools, which was a big reason I moved back. And I did that through working on information campaigns for tax levies and also bond issues. I worked for about 40 years for Commerce Bank, so I have a banking background, which I feel has served me well, serving on the school board for Columbia Public Schools. The school district is a very large, complex enterprise. And so I feel my experience on finance, on budgeting, on operations, on facilities management, along with my understanding of education because of my own education and children. I currently have three children in school now, two in elementary and one in middle school. But some of you know that I also have three 30-year-olds that all of them attended to at least some degree the Columbia Public Schools. I also feel that my experience on the school board will continue to serve me well as we go forward with the new superintendent. I co-led the search committee through that process. Very excited about Dr. Yearwood joining us and I feel like it's important for me to provide that support and was the reason I ran again. My three priorities remain the same. I am closing, want to close the achievement gap against across all student demographics through equity and education and also enrichment opportunities. We need to continue to develop sound strategies to attract and retain quality teachers. And we need to ensure that the district continues to earn the community's confidence, trust, and consistent financial support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person to speak will be Lucas Neal.
Hi, thank you so much for having us today. My name's Luke Neal. I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri. And I came to Columbia in 1999 to pursue a degree in math education from Mizzou. I did my student teaching at Hickman and after college I joined the staff of Young Life, which is an organization that I volunteered with in college. Young Life had a deep impact on me as a high school student. I've been with Young Life since 2003. I've also been married to my wife Amy since 2003. And she's a speech language pathologist with Columbia Public Schools. We have two daughters Nora and Agnes who are in elementary school. In addition to my work with Young Life, I also coached track at Hickman for 16 years. I have many strengths that I will bring to the board. One is that I have a solid perspective on the needs of our students. I've spent thousands of hours over my career working directly with students. I will always put students first in my decision-making. Two, I'm a moderate voice that will bring stability to our community. Our community has been deeply impacted by the pandemic. We don't yet know the full extent of the fallout. My guess is that it will be significant. So in light of this and the fact that we're bringing on a new superintendent, our community needs a steady hand at the wheel. And three, as a director of a nonprofit, I have spent the last 17-plus years working with boards and budgets and moderating difficult conversations. So I know how to hear all perspectives and find common ground. I don't come into this with an agenda other than providing a high-quality education to every student in our district. And I want to push our district to get back to the basics as we recover from the pandemic. So thanks again for having us.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Heidi Saylor speaking for her husband Aaron.
Hello. Thank you everyone for having me today and on my very first forum ever, so you're bear witness. So I'm Heidi, Aaron's wife, and he is actually at another candidate-related event today that he agreed to prior to this one being scheduled. So I'll be sitting in for him and I will answer as best I can. And if I am unsure of what he might say, I will take note of that question and I will have him post an answer to his Facebook page, Aaron Saylor for CPS School Board. So Aaron Saylor is the father of two wonderful children, if I do say so myself. He has lived in Columbia for several years. He got an associate's degree from Mobley Area Community College and was in the service industry as a carpet cleaner. And we had children, children are expensive. So he decided he wanted to go back to school. He had a phenomenal academic advisor, Kim Major, who her name is on the participant list here, so shout out to Kim. She helped him kind of find his passion. And as an adult learner at Columbia College, he graduated to be a programmer and now he is a web developer for MoDOD. And he was a junior volunteer firefighter in Southern Boone. So Aaron has two primary mental models that he takes into any decision-making. One is live and let live and the other is first do no harm. So he's very logical, data-driven decision-maker and he wants to be able to build strong communication and transparency if he were to be elected to the board.
Okay, thank you. Very succinct. Everybody's being succinct, which is a good thing. Next will be Catherine Sasser.
Hey, thank you so much for having me. I'm Catherine Sasser. I use she and her pronouns. I moved to Columbia 18 years ago to study at the University of Missouri and get my degree in education. I finished at the university with a secondary social studies degree and immediately began teaching and getting my first master's at a fellow's program through Columbia Public Schools. I'm a lifelong educator. I've been in schools basically my whole life, either as a student or an educator, an educational leader, or some combination of all of those. This is my passion and my life's work and it would be my honor to serve on the board and serve our community in that way. Like I said, I have two, I have multiple degrees in education. I have an undergrad degree in secondary ed. I have a master's degree in curriculum instruction. And finally, I have a specialist degree in educational leadership, which I completed with Dr. Belcher, the former superintendent. And in that, I also got my K-12 principal certification. So I have a lot of educational experience, having learned through the systems of education. I also have a lot of experience teaching and leading in various educational spheres. So like I said, I taught for nine years in Columbia Public Schools at three different schools, West Junior, when it, when we had junior highs, Gentry Middle School and Rockbridge High School. I was certified in both social studies and English and actually taught interdisciplinary courses there as well. In that nine years, I had three children, all of which are now enrolled at CPS. My kindergartner, we just enrolled for kindergarten for next year. And I decided to shift to start thinking differently about how I invest my energy. So I started working actually in international education with programs across Brazil schools and got a sense of how to run and implement programs at a broader level. And that was kind of to an end and I shifted to the model I'm in now, which is with Eman's National Center as a grant director of a multimillion-dollar federal grant that supports over 30 schools in Missouri and Kansas rural areas that are high need, helping integrate technology and increase teacher effectiveness with, with schools. So I am a passionate advocate for students, for teachers, staff and families. I am a leader who can think creatively, who can lean into authentic conversation with community, who can listen and can empower our district to benefit all our kids. As a teacher, I have years of knowledge of the needs of our community. As an educational leader, mom and advocate, I'm passionate about our schools. I feel uniquely equipped to take a seat on the Columbia School Board and I would appreciate your vote as one of the two you have to cast on April 6.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to remind our participants that it's time to start putting your name in the chat if you have a question. And we'll go on to our last candidate, which is, I don't know if it's Jean or Genie. I'm sorry, you'll have to correct me on that. Snodgrass.
That's fine. My name is Jean Snodgrass. I was named for my grandma. That's how she spelled it. So I can't change. I know it's a little odd with the pronunciation. So my name's Jean Snodgrass. I use she/her pronouns. When I grew up outside Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, I always forget some, I shouldn't say I forget. I was talking, telling someone that once and they started telling me about their experience outside Philadelphia and realized they were talking about Philadelphia, Missouri. So I'll specify that. Always attended public schools. My mom, who has education degrees and used to substitute teach and do a lot of teaching, at the time wasn't teaching but was very involved. She was that parent that was at every single school board meeting, knew everything going on from a very young age. Conversations about policy around schools were a big part of our family conversations. My sister now actually works in DC doing education policy with American Federation of Teachers. I have a mother-in-law and a sister-in-law who are public school teachers in Missouri, in Missouri and Iowa. So it has stayed a big part of that conversation. I want to tell you a little bit about kind of some of my experiences that I bring. I have two degrees, an undergrad and graduate actually in dance. And as part of that work, I worked with a nonprofit that we did a lot of educational work and a lot of work that made the arts accessible to everyone. The philosophy was that it was, there shouldn't be any barriers. And so as part of that work, we did arts education programming with, in Albuquerque, New Mexico, the Title I Homeless Project, which worked with students from the Title I schools. We worked with the juvenile detention facility to do programming related to educational work, connecting the arts to math and English and other core subject areas. And also had a chance to teach at the university level. So had those experiences. When we moved to Missouri and my husband and I and our family, we moved to Northeast Missouri initially. I actually went and got a, the Missouri Teacher Certification and was qualified and certified for math and English 6 through 12, did substitute teaching in the schools up there and also taught at a school over in Iowa for a little while. So have that actual classroom experience as well as some of the more experiential work that I did as an educator. While in Northeast Missouri, my husband and I owned a business. We owned a restaurant for five years. We were involved with the business community up there. And then we decided to come down to Columbia, where I have a job as Executive Director of Mizzou-Hillow, which is the Jewish Campus Center. And I work with college students and work with the community around various issues. As a nonprofit executive director, I've had a chance to work with budgets and boards and also to navigate controversial conversations, difficult dialogues, where people have different priorities and have things that they're really passionate about and don't always agree. I'm a really strong advocate for the public schools and a parent of three children in the schools and hope to tell you more as we move forward.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. So far we have, I know that Kathy has a question that she would like to ask first. And then so far, we only have one person in the chat indicating that they want to ask a question. All the other messages are Pam's wonderful announcements that she's sharing in the chat. So if you want to ask a question, please, please start entering your name in the chat. And Kathy, go ahead. And you will have one and one half minutes each to answer. And we will start with Luke will be the first one, then Heidi, Catherine, Jean, and then Teresa.
Okay, there is general agreement that there are racial disparities among Columbia Public School students, including graduation rates and achievement on standardized tests, as well as disproportionate punishments like suspension for misbehavior. What are three things you think the board should do to move toward greater racial equity?
I think some of the things that we're already doing need to be given more time to really take effect. So the equity training that teachers are going through, in fact, we've been able to increase the amount of training this school year because we've had Wednesdays off for professional development or at least half a day. I think that work is important because teachers and the way they view race and the way they view students affects the way they treat them. Secondly, I think that the restorative practices, training that teachers are going through has also been effective. Some schools are further along in that training. Some schools actually began doing this type of training before it was required. And those schools, at least teachers that I talked to, have seen better effect. And I just think that we need to give it more time for those, for those things to take effect. The last thing I would say is a lot of the disparities in academic performance and even graduation rates, I think actually can be traced all the way back to how students entered kindergarten. And I think increasing our pre-K education offerings is one of the most effective ways for us to close the achievement gap.
Thank you. Heidi?
Yes, Heidi Saylor answering for Aaron Saylor. So this question has a lot of nuanced pieces to it. You know, any, any goal-setting and goal-achievement and value-add to any, any kind of goal or working toward a goal is nuanced and there's a lot of layers to that. So I think the first thing that Aaron would say he would do is to research for a root cause and look at other schools and other districts that are similar to us. What have they been doing? What has worked? What hasn't? Oftentimes, it's easy to come up with an idealistic idea that sounds great. And then when you implement it, there's all these other little pieces surrounding human behavior that then ultimately gets us not where we meant to be with the best of intentions. So I think let's research, look around to see, see what other schools are doing. The second thing I think he would say is that we have a lot of resources in the Columbia Public School District. We are very well-funded. I think some of the issue becomes advertising of that. Look at what, what barriers to entry are there and what can we do about those barriers to utilize what we're already doing? And I think the third thing that Aaron might say is have an awareness of assumptions on all parties and an awareness for students, staff, and everyone else to kind of think about how they're entering into a situation and how that might change and impact other people.
Thank you. Next we'll have Catherine Sasser.
Thanks so much. I think the very first thing that we have to do is be willing as a district to engage in these really challenging, intense, but necessary conversations in honesty, acknowledging the places where we're trying to do the work and acknowledging the places where our system continues to have challenges in addressing these racial disparities as we continue to see the data show us that discipline rates aren't changing significantly with some of the initiatives we've put in. We have to be able to be honest with ourselves and I believe that we can hold the tension of the things that we're doing that are strong and the places where we need to grow. And that conversation needs to be representative of all of our voices, particularly the most critically impacted in this space. Secondly, I think we need to look to our BIPOC staff, students and families to lead us in this conversation. There are already really amazing initiatives being driven at building levels. For example, Dr. Solomon at Lang Middle School has done some incredible work with analyzing data around discipline and noting that it's, the issues are, 30 seconds, cool. The issues can be solved and resolved in more concrete ways if we look at the data really specifically and can be addressed sometimes at the building level. Finally, I would just say we, we have to investigate the extent to which our equity training, our restorative practices, all of our equity work, our conversations are really changing the data because they're not. And we need to take an equity audit to that, make adjustments based on the data that we see.
Thank you. And our last speaker or our next speaker will be Jean Snodgrass.
Thank you. So I think there's a few different things. I just want to say, first of all, I really appreciate that the question framed it as sort of three things. Oftentimes this question is, what is the one thing you would do to address racial equity? And I think that really to start just really needs to be this acknowledgement that there's not a single thing that we're going to do that's going to be a magic bullet. It's going to take work and it's going to take multiple things and programs and policies that are kind of layered on top of each other. I think one of the really important things that we have to do first is be willing to affirm the experiences of Black Brown and other students, hear what they're saying, teachers as well, and recognize that this is the truth of what is happening and be willing to address it. And that means, as Catherine pointed out, that, that sometimes we're not doing things well. We have to be willing to acknowledge that so that we can begin to address those issues. I think that we need to look at the equity training and the restorative practices trainings that are already happening and potentially expand them. I think that it's a start, but it's not going to solve everything. And we need to make sure that we really have the right buy-in from teachers and administrators and board members as well, so that we all understand what those bigger issues are as we're looking at it. And I think we need to take a really critical look at how our resources are going to our schools so that schools that require additional support, the students in those schools can get it and they are aware of their opportunities.
Thank you. Teresa, you're up next.
Thank you. There are some concrete items that I can describe that have been happening since I joined the school board three years ago. And first I will acknowledge the disparities and this is what has been a focus of mine. One big issue when I came on the board is the behavior matrix and the data we were tracking was not consistent among buildings. And so, and also the data was not always input at a building level. So a work group was formed that went through systematically and basically had to deconstruct what was going on, come up with common definitions and approaches and consequences for behavior. And that is now in place. The data should have been started collecting this year. I know with us not being in seat, it's maybe not going to be as great of a comparison, but now I think we're going to have good numbers to track, also the restorative practices that go along with that. A second item was last year, the school board adopted a new early literacy program. I'm very excited about it because it will be consistent from building to building. But we also had really good results for those children at risk with this program and that came out in the data. Last, I would say the board equity statement that was adopted last, right at the end of last year, we are using it to very systematically go through every policy, every practice, every program that we have and make sure we're looking at it with that equity lens so that we can improve the outcome.
Thank you very much. So that was the first question. I think we've gone all the way around. So Kathy?
Carl Skala is next.
And I didn't say this before, but we want the, the questioners to take no more than 30 seconds to ask a question. Go ahead.
All right. I have a question. First of all, welcome to all of the candidates. I'm interested in your views on intergovernmental issues and cooperation involving Columbia Public Schools, the County of Boone and the Columbia City Council, particularly as it relates to growth and infrastructure cost sharing.
Okay. And our first respondent on this one will be Heidi Saylor speaking for Aaron.
All right, Carl, thank you for the question. Congratulations. We have not talked about this one yet in any of the other forums. So I will venture to say that Aaron would answer that it, it is important to be collaborative and work together. And the reality of our buildings are that we have to work within the governmental infrastructure. One of the other forums had asked about some environmental options. And one of the things that was brought up was some of the, the buildings that are landlocked, those are, are more challenging to update based on the new, new technology for those kinds of things. So I would say Aaron would likely answer that he would research, collaborate with those government officials and try to find a way to take each of the, each of the group's restrictions, requirements, constraints, and look at all of those pieces to try to find the best answer for the community that works within all of those constraints and can really build the community is what I think Aaron would say.
Thank you. Again, you're very brave to be doing this. All right. Our next person would be Catherine Sasser.
Thanks. There's a lot laid in there. So I'm going to ask a clarifying question to make sure I understand and I'm answering the question appropriately. So we're talking about intergovernmental kind of collaboration between CPS City Council. And I think there was another entity.
Boone County.
Okay, Boone County generally. That's, that's it.
Yeah, I was particularly looking at the, the kinds of things about when, when in fact, growth occurs and the city has to incur some cost for roads and sidewalks and so on to accommodate some of the Columbia Public Schools and so on. There are usually agreements that are struck to share some of those costs.
Thank you.
Carl, I think you know quite a bit more than me in this, in this regard, but I will do my best. So without having kind of lived in those buckets, I can speak from a place of understanding that all of those entities, we all have kind of different levels of governance and responsibility. And of course, there are places where our responsibilities intersect, for example, in our infrastructure, in our community. So I think that what we have to do is make sure that in those relationships, we lay out clear roles and expectations around who the decision-maker is, who the consultant is, what the values are that we're aligning to, that's, that, that we're joining in the workaround. So really it's about how do we build a process that honors our community, honors the players that are in the process and make sure that we're being wise stewards of the resources that we have. And so, you know, my input, having been in public schools, being a mom of kids and having the teacher's perspective around how, how those experiences are, would hopefully bring a voice to, to guide that decision-making, at least from the school perspective, in supporting the work to move our community forward.
Thank you. Jean?
Yeah, I, I think that building these bridges with the community and the, the collaboration is really important on all the different levels. Obviously, when there's infrastructure growth, we need to look at all of that. I think I would ask that like, hopefully the city and the county are also looking, for example, when new housing developments are built, which is going to cause an influx and maybe more schools to be built out a little further away. But hopefully developers are also sharing some of that expense as they're kind of moving the population out from a centralized area where many, especially of our older schools are already built and located. I think that obviously we need to cooperate. We need to find ways that are, it's going to best support families and students. So if a new school is built, we need to get students to that school, right, safely. That might include crosswalks, that might include sidewalks, walking areas, ways that cars can drop off. What is the traffic pattern around those schools? So absolutely, ways that the different entities can cooperate. And I would also add that I think one thing that COVID has shown us is that we ask the schools as a community, we ask the schools to do a lot more than educate our children. And I would hope that there could also be collaboration and work with the different entities, with city government, things like that, to help build supports in for some of the students and their families that we now see have been missing. As one example, internet access, reliable internet access for some of our students and stuff. So, and, but yes, support the collaboration and working together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teresa, you're next on this one.
Yes, I think this is a really fair question because I've seen from a board position how important it is for the school district to work in collaboration with the city and county as we put in new buildings and maybe need to help care, share the cost of sidewalks or roundabouts and that type of thing. I think recently with the city, there was a right-of-way agreement close to the Career Center. So I think we have a history of wanting to work together and I'm very supportive of that. Also, I personally feel it's important that if we at some point can have our students, the older students participate with the city bus system, that would be very helpful for the city. participate with the city bus system, that would be very helpful for the city as well as our students and the cost there. The other thing that I would say on a personal level that I did after the first time I went through the boundary uh, conversation, it, the realization that it's bigger than the school system to solve this issue that we really need as a community to have equal opportunity neighborhoods. And so I convened a meeting with Randy Cole, uh, Tim Teddy and Dan Atwell to kind of talk about when we see opportunities where we can put in, uh, workforce housing that will help, uh, give equal opportunity neighbors to then benefit our students. We will all be stronger for it. So at a personal level, I'm very supportive of that.
Thank you. Luke.
Uh, I don't know the history on this. Uh, I, I don't know a lot, but I will say this. We know that the school system is an integral part of this community. These conversations are important to have. Um, I have a strong work ethic and a desire to investigate. It took me three months to decide on a dishwasher replacement for my house recently. Um, so I will do the necessary work, uh, to figure it out. I, I do think that this, that CPS should be paying as part of the, of the bill, so to speak, um, out of an issue of fairness. So, um, I don't, just to be frank, um, don't know a lot about this topic. I'm glad Teresa went right before me, um, because she does know a lot about this and that is really helpful. But, um, I'm determined to do the job to the best of my ability. And, um, I assure you that I'll make sure I'm up to speed when it's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Um, Kathy, I'm gonna jump in here and post a call on Alice because she had direct messaged me and she was the next in line, but I don't think you can see that Kathy. So Alice, would you post your question, please? Alice.
You. I, um, mentioned in the chat that two candidates were endorsed by the Teachers Union, um, Sasser and Snodgrass. So just following up on the teachers aspect, how we, what are three specific ways you would support teachers in the, the, the near future as we go back to going to school five days a week? Quite a change from this past year.
Okay, thank you. And this one Catherine will go first.
Um, as a former teacher, I'm excited to answer this question. Uh, one thing is to bring a deep knowledge of the reality of teachers to conversations. For example, many folks don't know that when we return to five days a week and lose that Wednesday, um, teachers of, at the secondary level who support virtual students, um, those virtual students who will stay virtual after the break, the only day that they can have time with that student that's not with face-to-face peers is on Wednesdays. So those students and those teachers is an opportunity for tutoring, intervention, direct teaching. And, and we don't have a solution for that yet. And being able to see that and understand the teacher reality um, and bring that conversation to the board and to our district is essential in supporting our students. Because the most, the biggest indicator for student success is teacher effectiveness. I don't think I'm gonna have time to get to three, but I'll try for a second one. Which is also to talk about specifically our most critically impacted teachers, which are teachers of color and making sure that we're recruiting and retaining them. Um, in having conversations with them, they wanna be listened to around what their experiences are. And from listening to those experiences, we can build a better way to equip them, empower them and give them opportunities to lead. And I have another 30 seconds. So, um, I think the other thing is just making sure there, our teachers are well-resourced and their plates are adequately full, which is very challenging in a pandemic year. But in our recovery, we have to prioritize giving teachers a fighting chance to do the amazing work that they're doing.
Thank you. Teresa, you're next. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I skipped Jean. I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's right. I thought I wasn't paying attention.
I thought I wasn't paying attention. Thank you for the question. So I think a few different things. I think one of the really important ways that we can actually support our teachers is to make sure as we're going back that we provide the schools with the resources that they need, the staffing that they need to support students in not just academic support, but also mental, emotional, um, support. We know that this has been a really hard year for a lot of folks, adults and children. Um, and our teachers are professionals at teaching and they also do so much more. But we wanna make sure that they can really focus on the academic piece. And that means providing these additional supports. I think that we can continue to provide professional development to our teachers. Again, teachers that are stronger teachers that have better understandings of some of the bigger systems. We talked a little bit earlier about some of the equity trainings. But also within their subject area, we know that teachers have a lot to offer and they can learn from their peers. So finding ways that they can have professional development from outside, but also ways to connect with their peers in other buildings to be able to talk about issues that are coming up. And lastly, I think that we need to make sure that we're asking our teachers what they need. Um, and this goes for all of our teachers. We need to know and we need to listen to their experiences in the same way we have to listen to experience of students and everyone else. They're the experts on what they need.
Thank you. Teresa, you're next.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm a nuts and bolts kind of person. So I'm gonna talk about some of the things we've been working on, um, since I've been on the board. Most recently, when we were discussing coming back to school and wanting a safe environment for our teachers as well as our students and staff. We, um, voted to go ahead and install ionization units, uh, in all of the buildings. And as the Chair of the Finance Committee and Chair of Facilities, uh, Committee, that was integral part of keeping teachers safe. Also, when I went to Tuscaloosa on the Chamber Leadership Visit a couple of years ago, one of the things I learned when I spoke to their superintendents there, they have a county and a city one, is that they were using a somewhat more objective model on how to decide how to budget resources per building and per student. And I brought that back and talked to Dr. Siepmann and introduced him to those superintendents and we've adopted that now. Also, uh, since I've been on the board, we have modified the compensation matrix significantly. It was very complex and, and convoluted. A whole team worked on it. I can't take credit for it. But basically what it does is it simplifies it. And it really puts the dollars not only towards the new teachers we're trying to attract, but those that have the most experience, tenure and, uh, master's degree.
Thank you. Luke, you're up next.
Great. Uh, number one, I would say, like some of these other candidates, we need to address the mental and emotional health of our teachers. Especially after the way that some of them were treated by our own community this last year. Remember that they're not just a means to an end. Uh, secondly, I would say, especially moving into the fall as we begin to figure out where our gaps are in learning after this last year, uh, the board is gonna have to be probably a little bit more nimble with resources in terms of staffing at different schools and trying to fill gaps where necessary. And then the third thing, and maybe this is just my pie in the sky idea, but I think it would be worth looking into doing an external third-party audit of the culture of CPS through, um, anonymous surveys and anonymous interviews with all of our stakeholders. We get a lot of information, a lot of people speaking on behalf of teachers, or this survey said this, this person of teachers said that. But to really get down and figure out what is the culture? Is it a place that people wanna work? Are there certain buildings that have other issues? And I think for teachers to really be, um, free to speak their mind and speak truthfully, it would need to be done in some anonymous fashion. And so that's an idea that I would like to look into.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Heidi, speaking for Erin.
Yes. So Alice, thank you for the question. I, I think Erin would say these three things. I think he would point out that, um, this has been, it's been over a year since we've been in five days. We've all been through a lot. So I think in general, if, if the culture can lead through patience and grace for all and keeping that in mind, it's, it's more or less like starting a new job or starting a new school year. And with that, I think we need to, um, keep in mind our level of expectations for all players involved. Everyone is in a transition and make room for that, you know, experimentation within a classroom to be able to find out what works there while also, um, working within the constraints of ensuring that we offer a quality, you know, consistent education for all of our students. So I think he would say lead with, you know, patience. And then the second thing is, I think he would say, um, that we, we would need to look at benchmarking some assessments at this point or in the near future. Not to ding anybody, but just to say, where are we? So that we know what to focus on next and, um, and then adjust the curriculum and the individual education plans accordingly to help, um, shore up anything that was lost in the last year. Then the third thing is, I think he would say, uh, provide support and resources, you know, anything, any tasks that we can strip off the teachers. Let's do that and, you know, build, build that community and, um, have everyone support the transition back to school.
Thank you very much. I think we have time for maybe one more question and then we'll do the closing comments. So Kathy.
Okay, when Col- when Caldwell has asked, to what extent should school board members be involved in school subject matter?
And we'll start with Jean on this one.
Sure. So I think it's really important for all of us who are running, no matter how much experience we have in education, that the, our current teachers are the professionals, our, our superintendent we hired in, um, the assistant superintendents are the professionals. And that said, it is the board's responsibility to help take a broad look at, at what we're offering and the type of education that is being provided. And so when you talk about how involved should the school board be in the, um, and I, and I don't know in the question if you're referring more to like the types of subjects or the particular curriculum. I think there is a role for the board to play in, in working collaboratively with the superintendent and with the professionals, with the teachers in saying, is this the right curriculum for our district? Is this with curriculum that brings the information that we want to be bringing to our students? Is there consistency as we move from elementary to middle to high school? Are these skills building on each other the right way? And having the opportunity to look at how assessments are going, to understand how students are reacting to the curriculum. But I do believe that it has to be a collaborative process because we have to trust our professionals. We have to trust our teachers and we have to trust our new superintendent, who I think has a lot of great ideas and is, is coming in really ready to, to work for our district and to work for all of us.
Okay, Teresa.
Um, a couple of things I would say on that topic. There is a policy specifically addressing, uh, changes in the curriculum. And I don't have it in front of me, but to paraphrase, it, it means that our district has an obligation to continually review, analyze, assess, uh, curriculum. And if it is going to be a significant change, it is the responsibility of the superintendent to bring it forward to the board. And get their buy-in, I guess you would say. But the other thing I would, um, mention, I think we have a very collaborative opportunity as a board to learn about new curriculum. A minute ago, I talked about the early literacy program. And we were invited to go to the project schools, which is what they mean when they pilot something to see how it, the two final, uh, finalists on the literacy program, how they were handled in the classroom, how the teachers and what they felt about it. So it was an enlightening uh, experience for me, having not been an educator. But also, one of the things that was interesting is how there was a very specific hope to be able to integrate reading with other types of, uh, subjects like, uh, science and social studies, for example. But the board overall has limited input on the curriculum. And it would just be if there's significant changes, we would get involved.
Thank you. Luke.
Yeah, my overall philosophy with school board is we need to make sure that the school board, uh, stays in their lane. Doesn't try to do everyone's job, but does their job well. And similar to what Jean said, these are, our teachers are educational experts. And so when it comes to curriculum, they are the ones that should be driving that ship. I, my daughter, when she was in kindergarten at Russell, they were doing a pilot program for a new math curriculum and we got to be a part of that and to see how excited the teachers were to bring this forward and to see how excited, um, you know, the whole building was to participate in this. I was really energizing. And so I do think it's the board's job to make final approval. But they need to be listening to not just the educators, but also the assistant superintendent of whether it's elementary or secondary. They care, they are the experts that we have hired.
Thank you. Uh, Heidi, you're next.
Right. Yes, I think, um, Erin would answer this question, um, saying that we have the, we have experts within the school district that, you know, they're well-versed in, um, these areas. And I think he would look to them to lead some of that conversation. And I think he would say the, the school board's, contribution to this would be to provide an outside kind of third party, not mired in the details, perspective around reviewing some of these high-level approaches. And I also think he would say, you know, um, there's a lot of room for flexibility and creativity within the offerings. I think he would say the, the goal of the school board would be to make sure that, um, our graduates are ultimately ready to go to college in any state. Um, so, so don't drift so far away from the general national curriculum that we've, um, we've set them up to have struggles in college. Uh, but otherwise, there's a lot of room for creativity. And we, and he would look to the staff and experts to guide that conversation.
Thank you. Catherine, you last on this one.
Uh, so our curriculum across K-12 is multifaceted and diverse and our teachers are absolutely experts. And year after year, they craft learning through reflection. And we have to lean into that expertise and professionalism, uh, as a district. Likewise, at the district level, our district administrators, elementary superintendent, secondary superintendent are our program implementers. They're running SRG through our schools. They're having those conversations in collaboration with teachers. There's a, there's a system that works here. Um, and, and like Teresa said, the board has a place in that, which is this high-level review of policy. And I would go a little further to say that curriculum in the classroom is part of what brings the classroom to life. It's part of the story that we tell our community about what's happening in our schools. And so as board members, we kind of have to be this, this a learner posture in this space where we are seeking to understand how that lives for two reasons. One, so that we can communicate with our community about the amazing initiatives that are going on, the pilot programming that's going on, the really cool learning that's happening. We also have to be equipped when it comes time to talk about those policy decisions, to be well-informed and speak and understand. So we need to be able to understand standard reference grading. Um, so that when, and if the superintendent wants to revisit that conversation, we are prepared to participate in it. As a former teacher, I'm uniquely able to do that. I have lived SRG. I understand standards from a teacher's perspective. Um, and so when that conversation needs to happen, I feel uniquely able to participate.
Thank you very much. Uh, I apologize to all the people who are still in the chat with questions. We just, with five candidates, it's, it's hard to get to all the questions. But I think we now need to segue into closing remarks. And we're gonna do that again in ballot order. So, um, let's start with Teresa.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, I'm sorry, what?
Two-minute time.
Okay, thank you. Once again, thank you for inviting us and holding the forum. Um, it's been a long journey from start to, uh, where we are now. So I really appreciate it being here. I wanna close by highlighting my experience again. I had over 40 years in banking and for 16 years of those, I served as a regional CEO for Commerce Bank. This means I've been a knowledgeable resource for the district as we deal with operations, leadership development, financial issues, including budgets, construction and facility management. For the last two years, I served as Chair of the District Finance Committee and also Chair of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. I know I've made a difference in my first term on the school board, but the job is not finished. I believe it is my responsibility to continue to serve our students, the families, teachers and community as we collectively attempt to fast-track lost learning time and ensure rapid student achievement. Continuity and breadth of understanding are important under these circumstances. The Columbia Public School system is an important part of the quality of life we enjoy here in Columbia, Missouri. And it's the reason I moved back to Columbia. I would really appreciate your vote on April 6th.
Thank you. Uh, next will be Luke.
Thank you again for having us today. It's, um, it's giving me some hope. One of the discouraging things about this process is interacting with a lot of people in our community who really just pay no attention to local politics. Many of my friends have never voted in a school board election. So being amongst people who are so actively engaged is actually, uh, really encouraging here today. Um, I will kind of highlight, you know, I've worked in this community, uh, in volunteer and, and, and full-time capacities, whether it's coaching tracker through my work with Young Life for, um, really for almost whether it's coaching trackers through my work with Young Life for, really for almost 20 years. And I see this opportunity to join the Board of Education as a continuation of that work to serve our community. CPS is such an integral part of our larger community. It's such a great asset that we have. It's one of the best parts about our community. And I would be honored to be able to help continue the great work that the board and the administration has done over the years. All the questions remaining in the chat, please reach out. I think I speak on behalf of all the candidates to say, I would love to engage in dialogue about those things. Sometimes even a phone call is a better format. And so please reach out with questions that you might have. But I would be honored to receive one of your two votes on April 6. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next will be Heidi, speaking for Aaron.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so if there's only a few things you remember about Aaron Saylor today, I would point out, you know, his two mental models again are live and let live and first do no harm. That's really kind of how he views the world. He has a really high locus of control in terms of, you know, that's, that's why he's running. He wants to serve and he wants to make a difference in the community. And if you pick him, fantastic. And if you don't, that's okay too. You're educating yourselves and making a decision based on that and taking an active approach in the local politics. And then I would say, you know, he's, he's a very logical thinker. He researches. He analyzes things. And when new information comes along, he changes his mind based on that new information. So he's continually learning and continually reassessing the ways in which he is approaching each of these conversations. And so thank you guys for bearing with me today on my very first forum. And check out Aaron Saylor on Aaron Saylor for CPS School Board. I made a note of all of these questions, so I will take those back to him and have him post an answer there. And I will also, I also saved the chat as ways to drum up some of that content that people would like to see on his Facebook page. So thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Catherine, you're up next.
Thank you. I am a lifelong learner and I'm a lifelong educator. I got my start here in Columbia Public Schools as a student at the University of Missouri and then as a teacher in Columbia Public Schools. If elected, I will be the only voice on the board that has had teaching experience in Columbia Public Schools. And that voice is critical for our students. I am passionate about teaching and students. I've volunteered in various capacities with students over the years. I'm currently the Board President of a nonprofit organization called Y'all Rock, which empowers youth through summer camps and music. I just this morning was virtually teaching in two third-grade classrooms at West Boulevard Elementary for a third-grade STEAM day where I got to do a Skittles experiment with students. Quite simply, education is my passion and my life's work. I'm also a mom and an advocate for three wonderful children and have learned the perspective-taking of a parent and how that stakeholder exists in the system. And I'm eager to learn more about our system and, and our leadership and how to put my leadership skills to work for our district. I have three degrees in education, two of those are graduate degrees. I'm a leader who can listen, who can hold tension, think creatively, engage all voices and have an intimate knowledge of what our families and students and staff face at CPS so that we can best support them and move forward into recovery and reimagining, reimagining our schools together going forward.
Thank you. And Jean, the last one.
So I'll echo everyone else. Thank you so much for hosting. Thank you all so much for having us. It's really nice to be able to speak to more, more folks. And I really appreciate that so many people left their cameras on because it's nice to see faces and not just blank screens. And totally appreciate the folks that did not leave their cameras on as well. I understand that as well. So a little bit again about me and my experiences. I have extensive and ongoing experience as an educator with various ages and in different types of educational settings, both traditional, non-traditional, experiential. I'm a previous small business owner. I'm a current nonprofit executive director with experience setting budgets, implementing programming, but also navigating constituent priorities and tensions where there are difficulties around where we do prioritize our budget. I'm a parent. I have three girls in the Columbia Public Schools at all three levels, middle, sorry, elementary, middle and high school. And the experience that comes with those transitions from level to level as well. I'm running because I'm really passionate about public schools. I'm an advocate for the public schools. I believe they're a really amazing resource in our community and opportunity for all of our students. And I want to help to provide some more openness and clear communication to our families to help amplify underrepresented and working parents' voices to address some of these issues of racial inequity that we've been discussing, to prioritize safety for students, teacher and staff, and to continue to build connections in our community. I feel really fortunate that over the course of these few months, as we've been doing these things, I've received endorsements from Student Organization, Diversify Our Narrative, from Sierra Club Osage Group, and also from the teachers from CMNEA. And feel fortunate that community teachers and students are supportive and that's a trust that I take seriously. And I hope for the opportunity to be able to serve you all on the Columbia School Board. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you all very much for visiting with us today and for your very concise and informative answers to all of our questions. And we wish all of you good luck. There, there will be, we each as voters get to choose two candidates out of the five. So that's going to be a hard choice, but I don't know. David, I'll just turn it back over to you to close the meeting.
Don't punch it twice. Thank you. Thank you, Lori, for moderating. Appreciate that. That's a tough job. And I want to thank all of our candidates and candidate representative for being here today. I appreciate our audience being here. Of course, we can't, it doesn't do much good to have a forum without an audience. So thank you all for being here. Next week, we're having Senators, Missouri Senators, John Rizzo, who's the Senate Minority Floor Leader. So come on back next week and hear him. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. However, we still have the Zoom, so if you'll have time and you want to stick around and chat with the, with our candidates or with each other, feel free. And with that, we're going to officially close. I'll see you all next week. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Just to thank you from, from the rest of the Mule Skinners. As co-president, thank you for attending the forum and thanks for all of the interest shown here. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi, good job.